Being to order, and if we could all please rise, the Honorable Councilmember Laura Toye will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Toye.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 1,927th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting, this is a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Wednesday, September 8th. And just a reminder, it will be on Wednesday instead of Monday night because Monday, September 6th, is Labor Day. Would the Clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Toye?
Here.
Vice President Barr?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
President McIntyre?
Here. So we have all seven members of the council with us this evening. This time, we have a presentation of the minutes for the 1,926th regular meeting of the City Council that was held on August 9th, 2021.
Sub move.
Move approval by Councilmember Toye?
I'll second that.
Supported by Councilmember Jolly. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take, would you please take the vote on approval of the minutes from the August 9th regular meeting?
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the minutes are approved unanimously without any corrections or edits. This time, I go to the council for any announcements, tributes, or recognitions that they would like to make. Councilmember Donavick?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure if we have any NASCAR fans in the audience or at home watching, but this Sunday, our Livonia youth corps was singing the National Anthem, and it was at the Michigan International Speedway. It was pretty cool to see them out there singing, and the planes fly by and all that. So it was really sweet to see our, some of our youth here and participating in the greatest sport in America, NASCAR. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Donavick. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President Barr?
I just want to take this opportunity, and he didn't ask me to do this, but I want to commend my fellow councilmen. Rob Donavick went out and picked up the trash last week, and I had to kind of chuckle because at our last meeting, as we were talking about some of the issues with the trash delays, that somebody made a comment about how many people want to grow up and be garbage men. And I have to admit, I kind of raised my hand when I was five or six years old, I want to be a garbage man. But, but, but Rob, this last week, one of the days, I don't know which way, which day it was, went out and did that, and I just, I think it's worthy of commendation. Nice, nice job, Councilman. And I know he was out there recently with the Inspection Department, too, and, you know, I don't know that I would have had the time to go do that, but even if I had, I have to be honest and say, I'm not sure I would have thought to. And it's just, it's a great way to really dig in and really understand the issues that we're dealing with, and I just, I commend you, Rob, so.
Thank you. I'd just like to add to that, that I was out of town, and someone sent me a text and said, "Did you see Councilmember Donavick on the news?" And you always, you know, pause a little bit and wonder what one of your colleagues is on the TV news for. And then I watched the story, and I believe it was two days that you picked up garbage and received accolades from your partner as your ability to keep up. And I'm sure that after a few, nine months in Iraq, that doing that kind of difficult work that most of us would find pretty impossible to do, that you were able to do it. So I'll just second what, what Vice President Barr said, and commend you for getting out there to understand what goes on on the routes and see the, see firsthand the experience. So thank you.
Madam President, can I just tack one thing onto that quick?
Yes, certainly.
I just wanted to note, too, and when I read the story about it, I was, one of the things that really touched me, actually, was what, what Rob said he experienced from, from the residents, and just the way the residents were supporting the, the garbage workers who, you know, are obviously working their tails off right now, seven days a week. And I, you know, Rob personally experienced just residents, I didn't know who he was, but bringing out, bringing out snacks and food and drinks, and that, that really touched me. So I just, I want to commend our residents for that as well. It's, we've heard that from GFL, but then to have one of us out there doing it and, and experience that firsthand, it just, it really brings that home. So, nice job, everyone. Thanks, Madam President.
Councilmember Toye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I had mentioned that about becoming a garbage person would be quite a challenge, especially now. But I wanted to, if we may, just hear what Rob experienced a little bit, because he did share a few things with me that I don't think people really realize what it takes and how those folks are out there, day in and day out, in this heat. And I know we're all impatient to get our garbage picked up, and our lights on, and all this stuff we're going through in these uncertain times. All I can say is go live in Afghanistan if you really think it's that bad here. And that's not to slight anyone, it's just, this is, these are serious times with serious problems. But I commend Councilman Dominet, Dominic, geez, oh, Pete's changed your name, Donavick. But I would like him, if he could, Madam Chair, just to share a couple of his insights that he had that really touched me as well in regards to being cleaner when I empty my garbage. Thank you.
Thank you to my colleague, Laura Toye. Just briefly, it was awesome to see so many neighbors come out and be so respectful and appreciative of the people that do really stinky jobs. It's not easy, and out in the weather, regardless of rain, regardless of the sun, it doesn't matter, they're out there and taking care of something that we normally don't think about. You put your trash in the driveway, you go to work, you go to your normal family activities, and then you just go on about your day, and you kind of forget about it. And those are real people with families, and they work extremely hard in multiple communities. One of the things I personally learned was to be cleaner with your trash. Make sure you put it in a bag, tie your bag up, don't put your bag at the end of the driveway where rodents, rats, et cetera, can get to it, which end up opening holes in the, in the bags, and then that continues to make the, you know, rat problems, rodent problems even worse in your community. So just being clean with your trash, putting your lid on there, recycling. I know in a few of the committees, our Councilwoman Toye and Councilman McCullough have been working on is trying to push recycling and education in our community, and how important that is as we move on as a, as a community, as a society, emphasizing recycling and the waste that we have in our community. So, thank you, Councilwoman Toye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I just said, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Councilmember Donavick.
Yes.
Or, well, actually, can you remind the public how heavy the bags are allowed to be?
Yeah, you know, I'm not as strong as Councilman Jolly, but not as fast as me either. But I like to think I'm kind of strong, and those are some heavy dumpsters, our garbage cans. I think there's a limit on garbage cans, most of which people exceed. I think there's supposed to be some thirty-some gallon garbage cans, I believe, and most of them are in the fifty gallon range, and they get extremely heavy. So that makes the job even more difficult. But our garbage men and women are still out there, still lifting them regardless. Thank you, Councilwoman Toye.
Thank you. I have a few announcements to make this evening, and before I move to some happier news, I would like to acknowledge the loss of a great lady and really the end something of a Livonia era when we lost our former First Lady, Pat Kirksey, known when she was born as Patricia Ann Donegan. Pat was born in 1931 in Detroit, and she passed away at Angela Hospice last, I guess, last week, on August 12th, 2021. Pat was not only a remarkable First Lady, really set the tone, and following some other outstanding First Ladies, but she was the epitome of class and elegance and grace. And Pat had a beautiful home and was a, just fabulous at entertaining, and you always just had wonderful things when you were there. But she always wanted everyone in her home, regardless of whether you had been a friend for forty years or four days, to feel comfortable at home. She was really well-known before she became the First Lady from her many, many years, decades of teaching at Jackson Center. And the mayor, and I'll get, get to the mayor in a moment, but the mayor once told a great story, and Mayor Kirksey, who survives, who survives her, had a just great sense of humor and could be self-deprecating at times. And he talked about, they had taken a cruise vacation, and he saw a family that run the deck, and he saw a family coming over approaching them, and he said he stood up straight because he was pretty sure that they recognized him as the mayor of Livonia. And so he said he was all ready to greet them and say, you know, "Yes, I am, and it's wonderful to see you." And he said they made a beeline right for Pat and said, "Miss Pat, Miss Pat, Miss Pat." And because the children had been taught by Pat, and the parents knew and loved her. And she was just, she, she was wonderful. She is, she was described by her children in her obituary as tiny but mighty, and that was certainly true of all who knew her. She survived by her husband, our beloved former mayor, Jack Kirksey, her three children, Amy Kirksey, Jay Kirksey, Matt Kirksey, granddaughter Jillian Cram, her son Asher, and three other, Mackenzie Kirksey, Kelly Williams, and three other great-grandchildren. So there, there was no per Pat's wishes, there was no service or funeral, but maybe if we could just take a moment of silence, think of our prayers and condolences for the family, and just a moment to recognize Pat Kirksey. Thank you. And the last thing I will share, for those of you that didn't see the obituary, the family asset in lieu of flowers, that people, please make a donation in Pat's memory to the charity of your choosing. So, rest in peace, Mrs. Kirksey.
Madam Chair, I know we could go on for hours with stories about Pat Kirksey, but she really has a special place in my heart, because when my toddlers were in daycare, I had a situation where I would come to pick them up, and my daughter was laying on the floor screaming, having one of those toddler temper tantrums. She didn't get that from me, I don't know. At any rate, I, one day I was explaining the situation to Pat Kirksey, and she said, "Well, you ought to really think about switching your daycare to Jackson Center." And I took her advice, I did that, and she never had another tantrum that I knew about at daycare after that. So it was great advice, and I always really appreciated her for making my, my life a little bit easier. Thank you.
There were a lot of wonderful memories from parents of children at Jackson Center, children that she taught at Jackson Center who are now parents, and then she also helped families at Jackson Center. And there were some wonderful comments and stories about families that she had helped, you know, keep their family intact, deal with those same kinds of stresses. So thank you, Councilmember White. All right, now on to some happier, happier topics. We have some birthdays to announce. Our Wayne County Commissioner and former councilmember, Terry Morecki, will be celebrating her birthday tomorrow, August 24th. On August 28th, we have a very important birthday coming up, Mr. Brandon McCullough, Honorable Councilmember, and I believe this is a milestone, am I correct?
He's turning 25, so.
Oh, there, well, congratulations.
No, it's big four-oh, appreciate it.
And, well, happy birthday, Brandon. And our District Court Judge, Sean Kavanaugh, will be celebrating his birthday on August 29th, and a, kind of an extended member of the council family through marriage, my wonderful husband, Brian Cullerton, who is known for his patience and coming to the assistance of many in the Livonia community. And when I get involved in something, what it really means is that Brian will be also volunteering, so, happy birthday, honey. And then finally, a commendation for our friend and former ZBA member, Ms. Lisa Frasky. And I'm going to go ahead and read this, and then Lisa, I would like you to come to the podium, and if you have anything to say, and then come up here and we'll present this to you. The City Council of the City of Livonia commends Lisa Frasky for three years of service on the City of Livonia Zoning Board of Appeals. Lisa Frasky was appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, beginning in July 2018, and has served until July 12th of 2021. She has attended 41 meetings and participated in the decision-making process of 130 appeals that have included residential, commercial, and industrial petitions. The Livonia City Council commends and extends its appreciation on behalf of this community to you for your contributions, and further extends its best wishes to you in the future. So thank you, Lisa. I don't know if you'd like to say anything?
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it very much. It's been a pleasure, and it's been a true honor. I hope to continue to serve somehow in the city, that's my goal. It just was time for me to, you know, I just couldn't commit for another three years, but again, thank you so much.
Zoning Board is a lot of work, and it's a lot of responsibility. Some know and some do not know that the zoning board is not a recommending body. The zoning board's decisions are binding, and if people don't agree or like, like them, the, the next step is the court system. So it's, it's important work, and we really do appreciate your diligence and your commitment to doing it, and we were lucky to have you, and I think services runs through your veins, so we'll look forward to seeing you in other things.
Thank you so much.
All right. Would you like to get a picture?
I'm sure you might.
All right, would you like to get a picture with all of council? Because really...
How can she say no?
We'll, we'll come up here. Yeah, I know.
You gotta get a picture.
We're gonna go over there.
No, she wants us all there.
Because really, who does not want a picture with the Livonia City Council?
Hey, forty!
This is a, this is a very, you know... This is very silent. You get them, they're all, they're all, they're all, they're all... They're like the, 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 the,[1095.12]
From Kathy and I. And we try to be good neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. But this particular music event that they had was ridiculous. We had, in the span of Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, total of 28 hours of constant music. Not in a row, certainly, but you had an extension on Saturday night, music until midnight. It was one of the first, if you might recall, one of the first really nice weekends that we had, where we could actually open our windows after that bad heat spell we had and rain. And we couldn't open our windows, not until the band stopped. And just for information, each night, they ran a little bit over, probably about 15 minutes or so over each night, Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday. So obviously, there's nothing you can do about what has happened. But I guess I want to question, ask a couple of questions of the council. I know that we have a noise ordinance. I don't know if that noise ordinance is something that is, when people apply for a waiver, if the waiver is basically just timeframe waiver? Or does it also include a volume waiver, if you will? If not, probably better look into that, because the volume was terrible. It shook our windows, literally shook our windows and our neighbors. Bunch of neighbors in our area know that we're involved with the city on certain things, so they came to us. I had probably six texts that night, Friday night and Saturday night regarding this. Took a walk down to Pearling Brook and Pickford, down by Coolidge School. You could hear the music there. We could hear the music all the way down to Seven Mile and Bainbridge, obviously not as loud. But living right in back of their property, I'm sure that you have all, again, probably received some calls or some notification of this. I don't know what you can do in the future. We want to be a good neighbor. We don't mind the festival when they have it. I think one of the big problems here was we had no notification. This event was rushed through.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. This event was rushed through, in my opinion, and the ordinance, or the waiver was. Normally, we see what happens, or we see a sign go up for their event. And we can make plans to go out of town if we want. We've done that in many occasions. We want to be a good neighbor. We'd really like them to be a good neighbor also. Thank you. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you, Paul. I'll go to the council. But I'd just like to, first of all, and we had a lot of phone calls and emails from people who had similar experiences. And I was out of town a lot of last week, so I've not had an opportunity to call Mr. Sackler, who came before us. The reason, and you are right, we did do this quickly, and we got a non-veto letter. And first of all, to apologize to you and the residents. And council takes responsibility, because we are the body that grants the noise waivers, and we did allow this to go through quickly. It was based on the fact that they have been having festivals for many years. And we have not typically, in fact, I can't think of any. And I'm sure I've received one or two over the years, complaints when they have their festival. So you are right, unfortunately, there's nothing that can be done for the inconvenience and the disruption to your lives. And noise pollution is a disruption to your life, especially late at night. That can be done retroactively. But Mr. Sackler will be made very aware of the fact that, number one, they violated the noise ordinance, because the police didn't come at the time. It's not a, right, ticketable offense. But it will cause us, I think, to take a very, very hard look at future requests from St. Mary's. And regarding your question about the decibel level, I do not believe that the noise ordinance... Mr. Burnier, am I correct that currently, as it's written, the noise ordinance only goes to time, not to a specific decibel level?
That's pretty much correct. When we waive the, when we do the waivers, I've never seen where we put a decibel level in it. We usually rely upon the good faith of the person who's requesting the waiver to respect their neighbors.
But I think, to your point, Mr. Condon, we could look at putting some sort of decibel level based on, you know, closest residents or something like that. But we do appreciate that you and Mrs. Condon are excellent neighbors, not just of St. Mary's, but of many and residents of our community. So thank you very much for taking the time to come here tonight.
Can I respond to one thing?
Please.
The, through the, looking through the ordinance, there are regulations on decibel levels for different things. And I think part of it, it gets very, very deep into the weeds on how to determine it, how far, things of that nature. We don't, I can't speak for all my neighbor friends or all my neighborhood, but we don't expect that. I don't expect that. But we would hope that something could be accomplished by this council for the future, so that, you know, this doesn't happen again. Hopefully, it doesn't happen again. We've had problem in the past last year with wedding receptions there, but it was COVID. So Scott, I know, or Mr. Barr, I talked to you about that. And so anyway, yeah, there's just an issue there that you need to take care of, hopefully.
And you have reminded us that there are decibel levels there.
I believe so.
They're not included where the process for waiver is, but they are in there for different areas.
Correct, absolutely. Thank you very much for your patience and your time and your consideration on this.
Thank you, Mr. Condon. Anyone else make comments? Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Is it prudent, I'd like to offer a resolution for a report and recommendation from staff or administration to investigate maybe adding a decibel level maximum to our waiver permit, if that's allowed?
Quite frankly, council could do it now if they wanted to, as a condition of the waiver. You could put in conditions, you could condition your waiver based upon whatever decibel level is. The problem is, every event is different, and every setup is different. Music has a tendency to dissipate as it goes out, as we know. So decibel level at what distance? There are things to consider that has, that we have to look at. But council now has the authority, when it's granting a waiver, to condition the waiver based upon certain factors.
Right.
Well, in that, I'll table it to at least maybe look in and study some decibel levels on that, Mr. Condon. So I just don't have any historical knowledge on the decibel game.
Councilmember Toy.
Madam Chair, what I heard Mr. Condon refer to was notification. It might be helpful, and well, now that he's not referring it, but perhaps we can refer it to one of our committees, so that we can get working on the decimals and perhaps some type of notification, whether, obviously, we do a great job with our city newsletter and some other communications. But I know when we were doing lot splits, issues to come a great deal. I didn't know about it. It's my neighborhood, blah, 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 blah. So we, I think it was O'Hallow, put in assigned ordinance, so that there's notification. Maybe we don't go to that, but certainly something to communicate to the neighborhood. So while we try and control the noise levels and adherence to the times, perhaps that way, you know to either get out of town, if that's what you choose to do, not that we want you to do that, because that's going way far. But you know what I'm saying to you?
Absolutely.
Some kind of solution, so at least you know there's a festivity going on, regardless if we did it fast, slow, or however we did it, you know? Because there's other places now that are requesting tents in light of COVID that have different, you know, venues going on. I think we have one tonight on our agenda that may back up somewhat to a neighborhood. And you just don't know how loud they get, you know? They start partying. And, you know, when you're 40, you really party hearty, so.
We don't keep track of the decibels at that time.
Did you, were you making, maybe to refer that to a committee?
Yes, Madam Chair. I don't know if the committee of the whole is proper, if you'd like to take that up with all of us, or if you want to specify a different committee that I open to your suggestions or anyone else's.
Well, we have senior citizens and families, and I think we discussed that we would like that to comprehend neighborhoods as well.
Oh, sure, okay.
So would you, you're moving to refer it to the Senior Citizens and Family Committee?
I think Rob chairs that.
chaired by Mr. Donavick.
Yes.
Do you have support?
I'll support.
Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on Councilmember Toy's motion to refer the issue of decibel? I think we should probably put our, you know, defining a decibel level and signage or notification issue regarding noise waivers and festivities to the citizens, Senior Citizens and Families Committee, which also, the intent is that we include neighborhoods in there.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
Just one quick comment on this before we vote on it. I'll support this. I have no problem with going to committee to talk about it. But I do think, we got to keep this in context, that this is, this is one instance of what's generally been a good neighbor. And I think we can effectively handle this with the next thing that's in front of us. It's no problem, send it to committee to talk about it. But I think we can effectively handle it that way when they come before us next year. So thanks.
Anyone else? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote? Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre. Aye. So that carries, so we refer that to Mr. Donavick's committee, and we will look for him to schedule a committee meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else that would like to speak before the council? All right, at this time, we go to reports from the mayors and other city officials. Yeah, no, no, I know. What I was going to do is just make a routine announcement, and that is Communication with the Department of Finance, dated July 29, 2021, forwarding various financial statements of the city of Lauenia for the month ending June 30, 2021. And now, under reports from the mayors and other city officials, I think we'd like Mr. Davis and Mr. West to have a little presentation for us. Mr. Davis, good evening.
Thank you, Council President. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. I appreciate the time here tonight during the meeting. Dan West is with me, representing the Chamber of Commerce. We wanted to do a brief check presentation. We had a Love Livonia event at Ford Field. That was a large success for us, about 1,000 people attended, food trucks, live music, maybe some adult beverages, depending on what your flavor was that night. And generally, a good time was had by all. And thanks to the Chamber of Commerce partnering with Parks and Recreation on this event, there was some excess funds. And this is going to, our intent is for this to go to our youth scholarship program, which has been happening since 2019. And future, with donations such as this, we'd like to see an expansion of the program at some point to include families and seniors as well. But this is a good first step, and I would like to introduce Dan West here to talk about this as well.
So thank you, Ted. Dan West, President of Lauenia Chamber of Commerce. And I want to thank the city council, Parks and Recreation, Department of Public Works, and Livonia Police Department for their partnership in making this event happen. Really relatively short order. Again, like Ted said, 1,000 people were there. And what my big takeaway of the night was, everyone was smiling. People just enjoyed seeing people, interacting with people. It was a beautiful night. And a lot of people are asking for the event to happen again, and we'll definitely talk about that going forward. But on behalf of the Livonia Chamber of Commerce, some of the profit we made from the event, we are donating to the Special Parks and Recreation Fund $2,000 for that. So Ted, for you. And then, more importantly, for the families that can definitely use the help getting involved in Parks and Recreation programming, so.
Fantastic.
But I don't, you guys want a picture as well, or just want to do a picture as well?
Well, do you want to, we could have a picture. Is there, do we have someone here to take a picture?
I'd be happy to take a picture.
Madam President, do we want to wait for Councilmember Barr? He had to run to the restroom, maybe, or something?
No, he had to take care of somebody else. I think we're in that order of, as much as we'd like to wait for the Vice President, we'll just have to photoshop.
There's Osmer on the side.
Well, they keep making you get up.
I figured out how to work my mouse. It took forever. I couldn't get it to read, to get this active, so I would pick it up. Oh, I don't care.
All right. At this time, we go to the consent agenda. Items one through six are listed on the consent agenda. They are voted on as one item. It does not mean that they're any less important than any other items on the agenda, but rather that they have been determined not to be controversial in nature. Anyone in the audience have any comments on anything on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none?
Move the consent, support.
Thank you. I should have done that before I went to the audience.
That's all right.
All right. I already went to the audience, so no need to do that. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll, call vote on approval of the consent agenda? Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre. Aye. And the consent agenda is approved unanimously by all seven members here. Moving on, we go to unfinished business, beginning with meetings of the committee. Item number seven is a committee of the whole meeting on June 23, 2021. And this was, the subject matter was to authorize the Parks and Recreation Commission to set certain fees and charges for activities at Livonia Senior Citizen Center and Greenmead, as well as league athletic play and outdoor activities and rentals. I will.
Madam President.
Yes?
I'll offer an approving resolution, which is Resolution A.
Could I give the readout?
I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I was just going to give the readout from the committee meeting.
Oh, go ahead.
But thank you, and then I'll go to you right away. The, I should, let me say who was in attendance. Committee members present were McIntyre, Donavick, Jolly, White, and Toy. Mr. McCullough and Scott Barr, Vice President Barr, were not able to be there that evening. We also had Mike Slater, Paul Burnier, Mr. Davis, Michelle Coppin, Assistant Director of Parks and Rec, and Tom Murphy, the Facilities Manager. And I don't think we had any other guests. We did, we had, did I say Dave Varga? Dave Varga from the mayor's office and Linda Shield, our city treasurer, were also in attendance. And the meeting was led by me. And noting that for the last 19 years, the Parks and Recreation Commission has been given authority to set fees for programs within the Jacke Kirksey Recreation Center. Our Superintendent of Parks and Recreation and Community Resources, Ted Davis, reviewed the rationale for giving Parks and Recreation Commission the authority for rate setting. And he reviewed the process for basing fees on the cost recovery rate model that analyzes programs based on the degree of community benefits. He also reviewed extensive analysis of all the recreational programs, specifically looking at the program type and desired cost recovery level, explaining that different sorts of programs have different cost recovery targets, again, based on their use in the community and their costs and benefit to the community. A point was made that if the council were given the authority to set fees through a resolution, the authority can also be rescinded by a resolution. Additional point was made that because the Parks and Recreation Commissioners are all appointed by the mayor and are not subject to council review and approval, this gives, giving the Parks and Recreation Commission rate setting authority is no different from giving the mayor the authority. If there were any change to be made to the appointment of commissioners for Parks and Recreation, it would require an amendment to the city charter. Approving and denying resolutions were both offered, and requests is made for council to receive regular updates annually from the Parks and Recreation Superintendent. And with that, Councilmember Jolly.
I'll offer the approval, as I indicated earlier.
Okay.
I'll support.
Support from Councilmember McCullough. Council?
Madam President.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you very much. I want to commend Ted Davis and his people in regards to making this presentation before us and presenting a lot of facts in regards to the cost recovery and the programs that are offered at the recreation center and otherwise. I think one of the important things in consideration of this is, there's really never a good time to raise fees on any of these programs. And it oftentimes, whether we want it to or not, becomes political in nature in regards to what a particular headline will be, as opposed to what the actual effect would be or the need is. It's for that reason that I support this request by the Parks and Rec Department. I think some of the discussion that we had on that particular night was important. It was useful, there were questions that were asked. I will say that I think we have some very capable people on the Parks and Recreation Commission, people like Mr. Condon, who was here earlier, and other well-respected people in our community. I don't think that they would make any decisions rashly or at the direction of anybody else in particular. In regards to this, I think my only hesitation is the fact that we may see Mr. Davis less. And I don't know if I can handle seeing him less. But honestly, I think this is really, Parks and Rec has proven their ability to do this adequately and appropriately through the programming at the recreation center. It should be no different in regards to programming at the parks, when they are very alike in all circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Toy.
I don't often disagree with my learned and very capable colleague, but on this one, I got a little problem, and I've shared that with Director Davis. And I think he does a superior job. It's nothing to do with that. It has everything to do with the check and balance of dollars in the city. And once this council starts authorizing different commissions and others, they're appointed by, and nothing against the administration, they're doing a great job, I'm not knocking anyone, but once you start allowing and making those kinds of changes in things that we approve, and the check and balance, and the transparencies that go along with the dollars of this city, and not that anybody's going to do anything wrong, but I think seven minds on this that are elected by the public and the people, if you will, really constitute what we do as our job. And our main job is budgets as well, besides block parties and all those other fun things that we do. But I really have a little bit of yank on this one, and I voiced it before, and I don't mean any harm to anyone. It's just, it's just my feeling that I've had and the experience I've had over the years, when we look at different changes as it pertains to dollars and cents and who authorizes those and who does those. I'm not scared of headlines. You know, I mean, if you're going to get a bad headline, you're going to get a bad headline, and you deal with it. And quite frankly, you know, if you get a bad email, you deal with it. You're an elected official, you have to take the bows and arrows where they are and where they may be. And unfortunately, in this day and age, a lot of us that are in politics do take those bows and arrows. But that's what we sign up for, to serve the public and the safety of this community. And that's where I come from on this. And that's, again, Mr. Davis does a superior job, as does our administration, with many, many tasks that the city does. It's just, I have a very strong feeling that we need to keep track of the dollars and cents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice President Barr?
Councilwoman Toy's comments are very well taken and resonate with me deeply. I would concur with what she said about, I actually think the fact that this gets in the headlines is one of the reasons not to do this. That's called accountability, and that's, that political accountability is there for a reason. So that is one of several deep struggles I had with this back when I think this first came before us. Was it late last year, Ted, probably, and before this went into committee?
Councilman Barr, yes, it did come before council in December of '20.
Yeah, and so when that went to committee at the time, I had many deep concerns about this that closely aligned with what Councilwoman Toy just said. Since that time, I've had a chance to study it in detail on a number of occasions, including sitting down with Ted, as I'm sure many of us have, one-on-one to go through it. I think, as I've struggled with this, the thing that I couldn't get, one of the compelling points for me was the fact that such a high percentage of these types of fees are already set in the way that's being proposed here. There's a few that are not. And I struggle to, I struggle to reconcile what's unique about these particular fees that have been handled by council when the rest has been handled by the administration. That being said, I still like keeping that check and balance with council. But I also was impressed, as I went through in detail the cost recovery model that Parks and Rec has put together, I'm impressed with the, with the thought that has gone into that and the systematic approach to that. And the rationale in that made a lot of sense. I also liked the fact that even with passing this, we still maintain the control of what the rec membership fees are, and I think that's important. Could probably, I'm sure we could have the same debates about that, but that gives me some measure of comfort. So having struggled with this a lot, even through today, I do intend to support this. But it's not, it's not something that I do lightly. So thanks.
Madam Chair. Councilmember White.
I think there are a couple of factors here. Mention has been made of the cost recovery model, which I was very impressed with when we were looking at this in committee. But the other thing is, we are going to get regular updates. And we are doing this by means of a council resolution. If it turns out not to work out, for whatever reason, we as a council have the authority to rescind that resolution and go back to how this matter has been dealt with in the past. So for those reasons, I support this request. Thank you.
Thank you. If no one else wants to speak, I'm going to pass the gavel on this to Vice President Barr. I'm very, I'm a numbers person.
Go ahead, Madam President.
You did have to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am a numbers person and a data person, and was impressed with the analysis, and not just the analysis, but the framework that you'd use in the cost recovery model and looking at different factors to determine which, what the recovery target should be for each of the different programs. And as you know, when we started our meeting, it was my understanding that you were looking at the same static recovery percentage for all programs. And then I quickly realized, once I let you talk and go through the data, what you had done, and I was really impressed with that. And I think this is, I think this is the right way to go about it, and I think it makes sense, given, again, that these aren't going to be arbitrary. We're following specific targets here. I do have two comments. One is that with the responsibility to set the fees comes the responsibility to make sure that the fees are collected. And that regardless of who it is that's renting a facility, that they are charged the same as anyone else who would rent the facility, or the field, or what be it. And the second, Ted, is a question, and we didn't talk about this in our discussion about cost recovery, it's really a fine point, but it's in thinking about, we have a rate that now that we charge nonprofits, right? Which is different from what we charge commercial entities, correct, for using facilities?
Correct.
And I would like to ask if you could look at an additional fee structure for 527s, which are political organizations. And, you know, we allow, we allow political organizations, like either Livonia Republican Club, Democratic Club, any such, you know, similar political club, and I think those are all 527s, to use our facilities. I do not think that they should, I think that community service or philanthropic organizations should pay a lesser amount than the political organizations do.
President McIntyre, if I may ask a question on that. You want me to address the grid? Because I believe right now, those are all done through what's commonly called the grid, which was passed well before my time.
It is the grid. It does go to the grid.
Okay.
And I don't think right now that 527s are specified in the grid.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
So we could certainly reopen the grid and take a look at that. That would come before council again for approval.
Even if this goes to the...
My understanding, yes, since that is a different structure that discounts certain organizations, so that would come before this body, again, with a recommendation.
Is that, and I'm not, I'm just curious, if the city attorney sees that as a separate?
You know, I was thinking aloud when Mr. Davis said that, because in some respects, we've kind of set up a little bit of a conflict, in that all the rates are established by the commission, yet council is putting in a grid framework. Quite frankly, it can be looked at that they establish the rate, and the grid would establish a discount rate or a percentage. So they could work harmoniously, but it was my impression, right off the bat, that those would all be established by the commission, all the rates.
That was my, that was my assumption in bringing it up, because, I mean, the grid is a subset of rates.
Unfortunately, the problem we have is the grid, as I understand it, was, is an ordinance grid.
Okay.
It's passed by, I believe, council resolution, but it also applies to police and fire fees, library, it applies to certain things, and it could still apply to those entities, those departments, and Parks and Recreation could just be separate from the grid and establish a different grid, a different discounting.
Okay. All right. Then I guess what I'd like to do, instead of taking any action with that, is... Then I guess what I'd like to do, instead of taking any action with that, is that we move, you know, that we move forward with this, and then maybe ask the law department if we could refer to the administration and law to come back to us with a recommendation for the grid?
Yeah, we'll be happy to do that recommendation as to whether or not, A, the grid still applies.
Or the Parks and Rec part of the grid still applies, right?
We'll take a look at that, whether it still applies at all, and then if it does, if there is a talk of adding the 527s in there, we may have a difference of our opinion on whether you should, because once you open that up to some political parties, you've opened them up to all political parties on a discount, and that may be problematic.
But we do it right now.
Not if we have the discount for the 527s. If you're asking, if you're giving a discount on a, right now, we don't have it, is what I'm hearing you say, Madam President. And that's fine, because we're not giving a discount to any...
We are. We charge, I think, don't we, Mr. Davis? We charge them, the nonprofit organization, they do get a discount.
I believe, Council President, you are correct that we do charge political organizations the nonprofit rate on the grid, because they would make up majority of Levonia residents, a Levonia-based organization, so they are in that grid already receiving a discount.
President, I'm going to go to Mr. Jolly in a minute, but I think, just trying to help the conversation, I think what you were saying is not a discount, but you were saying that political organizations should not get the same level of discount as a 501(c)(3).
That is what I'm saying, and they do currently get the same level of discount as a nonprofit, as a charity, philanthropically, community service.
And for what it's worth, I agree with you. When we're talking political organizations, once we give a discount to one, you're giving it to all, and there are some that you...
But we do currently.
Well, but under this, under this new format, if this is removed from the Parks and Recreation, if this is moved from council and is put in the Parks and Recreation Commission, they can redo the grid in such a way as to look at the, what is appropriate.
And then, I, okay, then I guess what I would be arguing is that then, that then we remove 527s, right? We remove 527s, we make it clear that they're not included, and maybe we make it 501(c)(3)'s that receive, or, you know, and I don't know if there's another category, I can't remember if, you know, exactly what 501(c)(4)'s are, but I think if this does go to the Parks and Rec Commission, that we would like, we'd like to know what the recommendation is on the grid, and then I think I'd like to know before Parks and Rec changes the grid, if you would, as a courtesy, come back to us and let us know what the plan is before you vote on it.
I know there had been talk previously, previous years, about changing the grid when it dealt with the senior citizen discounts, and I don't, and of course, it never, it wasn't changed because of everything that came up in the meantime, but there was conversations about looking at the grid again and changing the grid, and I think this is a perfect opportunity for the commission to take a look at it, because there are maybe some more appropriate groups that deserve breaks and others, like you say, the charitable organizations as opposed to the political organizations.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Jolly.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So Ted, in regards to the discussion that council presidents brought up here, by way of practice or operationally speaking, are these discounts reflected on, like, the reservation system that is currently available online? Or in practice, how does this actually take place? I know that there is a process by which a group who wants to do a nonprofit event at a city park can go to a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting and receive a discount or a waiver based on the nature of their organization and what they're planning on doing. But say if somebody was trying to rent a pavilion or a particular rentable space in one of the city parks, and they went to reserve it online in the online reservation system, doesn't that just charge the standard fee?
It does, Councilwoman Jolly. There are some exceptions to the grid structure. One of them is the rec center is completely outside of the grid. That was by, my understanding, again, by ordinance or by council resolution. So the rec center has never been a part of the grid. So a nonprofit group coming in and wanting to rent a room at the rec center pays a member, a resident, a non-resident rate, period. There's no discounting there. Now, for other municipal buildings and other areas, we have, we follow the grid. Fields are one, for LJL, right? They're given a discount. Courts for basketball, again, for LJL, they're given a discount. The senior center has always followed the grid, and they're discounting for nonprofit groups. So those things are still in place. But to answer your question, no. An online reservation system to, for a nonprofit organization to go and rent a pavilion, that is not reflected in our online registration system to rent a pavilion.
So, and I'm not, I'm just trying to understand the situation here. I'm not opposed to what the intent is here or anything like that, but so under the circumstance presented where there would be a political organization who'd wish to rent some usable space, how would they typically do that, or in general, do you know of situations where that takes place outside of a normal reservation system?
I think they would go to the program supervisor directly.
Are you aware of that happening in the relative near past, or no?
Yes. I mean, only by way of seeing an organization, you know, advertising a fundraiser at a facility.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman White.
I think by virtue of this discussion, there is a lot of merit to the idea that the grid and discounts and things of that sort, of what sort of groups should get discounts, is really a policymaking task, and I think I would be much more comfortable with any changes to the grid continuing to be made by the council as opposed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Just my thought. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Vice President, how did the grid suddenly enter into this conversation? I'm a little confused. And it's a good one, don't get me wrong, Madam President, I was trying to rip on you, I was just saying, no, I mean, you know, just for discussion's sake here.
Well, if I can tack on to that, Councilwoman Toy, could I get some clarification as to what this means for this resolution that's before us tonight? If we're, what Councilwoman White just suggested, is that, can we pass this tonight with, if, and still stay in keeping with what Councilwoman White just suggested?
Can I answer?
Yeah, either one of you.
Councilman Barr, so council has historically set fees, whether it be a room rate at the senior center or a ballfield rental rate, right? You set a resident and non-resident fee, period. The grid is outside of it and a part of it at the same time. So, a fee like that, like a ballfield rental, let's say, it has to go through, the department makes a recommendation to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission approves it or denies it, depending on, if they approve it, it would then go to city council for approval, correct? I mean, we've done this before in lots of different fees. So that fee gets set. Now there's this grid out there that treats nonprofit entities or community groups a little bit differently and gives them a discount. The fee is still set, it's just giving some of these other groups, these organizations, a little bit of a break. I mean, it depends, it's a percentage based upon, you know, what your organization is and percentage of Levonia residents involved and other factors, but the fee is still set. Council still sets that fee, it's just the grid is still out there and can be applied or is applied in certain circumstances with certain groups. So, in my mind, to answer the question is, yes, the Parks and Recreation Commission could set fees, and the grid still exists, and discounts would be applied as warranted by the grid as it currently stands.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilman, thank you, I'm going to go to Councilman Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. In terms of the grid, the grid takes in consideration the percentage of Levoni residents involved in the organization, correct?
I believe so, Councilman Donavick. I mean, the grid is...
I often do be look at the grid, yeah.
Not that often, thankfully, but I mean, it is, the last time I looked at it, I believe Councilwoman Toy actually brought up this year, or maybe it was last year, reexamining the grid, and I'm not sure if it was referred to committee or not. I was told at one point, when I first started here, way, way back when, five or six years ago, I wanted to examine the grid and some of the things that I didn't think made a lot of sense with the grid, and I was told jokingly, like, that's probably a good idea on a policy that's been around for 20, 30 years, to go ahead and change it your first year here. So, I left it alone at that point and didn't honestly circle back to it, and haven't really had a conversation about the grid until tonight.
On live TV.
On live TV, yes.
And that goes back to the question that was asked, if we do vote for item number seven tonight, does that give council authority to oversee the grid, to make amendments to the grid, et cetera, or does that power go away to the Parks and Rec Department if we vote to approve item number seven?
I don't think it affects the grid at all.
Mr. Law Department?
Well, I wish I, to be honest, I wish I had prepared for this issue, but the grid, the grid and what council is talking about now really are two separate and distinct issues in some respects, but they're very much intertwined into one issue. By giving the power to set fees and rates to the commission, in essence, in my mind, that was also establishing discounts, because that's part of rates and fees, or discounts that might be, might be applied. That's not to say that council couldn't have the resolution say that there should, the grid is as it stands with the discounts, the commission gets to establish the rates and fees subject to the present grid, and if they want to change the grid, they have to come to council for approval of the change of the grid by a resolution. It can, whatever council wants can be accomplished, one way or the other, either leave it the way it is now, understanding as part of the resolution, and quite frankly, I would make it crystal clear, that the resolution includes the grid remains in effect unless council changes the grid, and if the commission decides that they think that the grid should be changed, then they come to council for approval by resolution of what the grid is.
Mr. Chair.
Donavick, are you, Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Councilwoman White.
My days as a municipal lawyer are coming back, but I agree with the fact that we can pass this resolution, allow the commission to set rates, but keep authority over the grid in the hands of the council, and that changes to the grid and the policies behind that, and whether certain groups should get discounts or shouldn't get discounts, should be a decision made by the city council.
Support.
So I have a question, is that a separate, are we asking for the resolution on the table to be modified, or are we offering a separate resolution, a second resolution?
We could do it either way, either way.
So, for sake of easiness, I'll adopt that as my motion, if the original supporter will do so as well.
So my, who was the original supporter? Okay, so my understanding is, we have the resolution that we, Resolution A to approve, but also including the stipulation that council maintains authority over the grid. Is that what you're offering?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Councilwoman Toy.
You know, I really think I can digest that, no offense to that, or Kathleen or anyone else, but my mind started going to that grid, just as you pointed out, that I brought up last year, and I thought, it really is, as was said, a policy issue, you know what I mean, as far as this council and what we look at as far as budgets, and I really hate to see that go to an appointed body by someone other than the seven of us, and I was glad the maker of the motion has adopted that as well, but I didn't know, you know, I was glad the grid was brought up, thank you, Council President McIntyre, so, we may get an unanimous vote on this quite yet.
Could I clarify, so as I understand the resolution, Mr. Jolly made a motion to approve Resolution A, supported by Councilmember McCullough, with the condition that the current grid that is in effect remains, and council retains authority over the grid.
Toy.
Yes.
I understand, yeah. Councilwoman Jolly, thank you, Mr. Burnier. Councilwoman Jolly, go ahead.
So this is a worthwhile discussion that we've had here. I just feel sorry for anybody at home watching, who has turned in randomly in the middle of this, and they see us talking about the mysterious grid. That sounds like we're talking about Matrix, like the movie The Matrix or something like that, but I think we're headed in the right direction here, and I'm hopeful that Councilwoman Toy will vote yes.
All right, any other comments on this?
You are my favorite. No.
I should note, it's 8:05, for anybody that's tuning in for the study meeting, we are still on item number seven on the regular, I predict that the remaining items will go more quickly than what we spent on this, but that's probably famous last words, but we are still on the regular agenda. So, no other comments from council, we got a approving resolution on the table with support. Any comments from the audience? And they're like, no, please no. With that, Madam Clerk, if you'd take it to a vote, please.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye, the motion passes, and I will pass the gavel back to President McIntyre to continue the meeting.
Thank you very much, Vice President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
One last question about the grid.
Number eight is Finance and Budget Committee meeting, that was a meeting of August 11th, 2021, that was the subject of advanced budget reviews for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022, the pre-budget meeting. Before I go to Vice President Barr for a report out from the committee, it's respectfully suggested that the August 2021 Assessment Data booklet from the city assessor dated June 10th, 2021 be received and placed on file for the information of the council.
Thank you, Madam President. We held this meeting on Wednesday, August 11th, and people present, we had the, I have to make sure we fix these notes, I didn't catch this, I believe we had all three committee members present, and expect we had the entire council present, and then we also had Lyndee Shields, City Treasurer, Paul Burnier from the city attorney, Michael Slater, Finance Director, Dave Varga from the mayor's office, and LaShawn Thomas from the Director of Governmental Affairs. Commude the meeting at 7:04 PM. This is the meeting that really launches our budget cycle every year. It's the first opportunity for council to just weigh in on, considerate, we get a report from the administration on what the assumptions are going into the budget, and then we get an opportunity to weigh in on various things that we'd like to be considered for the budget, which is due to be delivered to council on September 15th. Then we'll review it, it'll go to a public hearing, and I forget the exact date, but we'll prove it during the fall, and I think the new fiscal year takes effect November 30th. Just a brief report out, Mike Slater, Director of Finance, reviewed the 21 assessment data and what that means for our budget projections in fiscal year 22. Lot of good news for the city, property taxes, state equalized value, taxable value, state shared revenue, general fund revenue, overall revenue are higher than the previous year. It's a function of all of our property values going up. As a result of that, there will be another headly tax reduction this next year. The budget will include one additional code enforcement officer, that's something we've talked about at various times here, but that is the only change to the staffing numbers. The city's required contribution to the defined contribution plan will be lower, but the required contribution to defined benefit plans will be higher. We had some discussion about the effect of going to a defined benefit plan, again, for the firefighters and police last year. It was noted that 87% of firefighters transferred to the defined benefit plan when it was offered in the current contract, only 45% of police made that transfer. The Recreation Center continues to operate at a deficit due to a significant percentage of the membership not returning after the pandemic. Levonia will receive $8.9 million from the Federal American Rescue Plan, we had a lot of discussion about that. Half of that is already available to us, the rest will be available in July 2022. No proposals have yet come to council on what to do with that money. We then moved into the portion of the meeting where we just had discussion about different things to consider, and a few highlights from that, we had some talk about Bike Walk Levonia. Mike Slater, again, Finance Department, did tell us that there is almost $300,000 for this purpose and next year's Rhodes Village money, but then there's also a 3/4 of a million dollars included as a match for a multimillion dollar grant request that we are pursuing currently. We talked about possibly more code enforcement officers, the subject recycling carts came up, request for a study on what we spend for city vehicles and alternative approaches to that program. We had some discussion about that, had some discussion... Had some discussion about the future of Noble Library. The administration said they're still working on this and they're hoping to give an update to council as soon as that's ready. And then we also had a discussion about whether it made sense fiscally to provide cell phone, or I shouldn't say fiscally, just from a best practice standpoint, to provide city-issued cell phones to city council. We had a fair amount of discussion about that. I guess time will tell, but I think it's fair to say from the tenor of that discussion that we decided that we would not pursue that. Next steps, the mayor's budget submitted to council on September 15th. Budget must be adopted by council. There it is, on November 1st. And the committee does recommend receiving place on file for the information of the council, the assessment data booklet, as Council, Council President McIntyre already indicated. This is a standing resolution that will remain in committee and we adjourn the meeting at 8:41 PM. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions? From the audience, any questions? All right. Then with that, we will move to the next section of our agenda, unfinished business. This is item number nine. This is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, number 543 is amended. This came to us from the Department of Law. It was regarding petition 2021-06-01-04, submitted by Speedway LLC to rezone the properties at 13950 Merriman Road and 31324, 31330 and 31374 Schoolcraft Road, located on the northeast corner of Schoolcraft and Merriman Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 23, from C1 local business to C2 general business. The public hearing was held on August 2nd, 2022, I'm sorry, August 2nd, 2021. Council.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
Offer and approving on this item.
Support.
Is this a first reading?
It's a first reading.
It is a first reading. I'll offer a first reading.
All right. Thank you, Council. Vice President Barr has offered a first reading on this. Item number 10 is a roll call vote. This comes to us from the Department of Law regarding petition 2020-12-06-03 to consider the adoption of a compiled and revised Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance and Livonia Vision 21 zoning map. The proposed Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance provides new definitions, creates several new zoning districts, and deletes several existing districts, updates the list of permitted and waiver land uses for each zoning district, provides new requirements and regulations for lot sizes, building setbacks and lot coverages, off-street parking signs, alternative energy systems and other regulations for the structure and uses, including a new form-based development option for the city's commercial districts. The first reading was given by Councilmember Jim Jolly on August 9th, 2021. We have a note that is respectfully suggested that the proposed repeal and replacement of the Livonia zoning ordinance, number 543 is amended from the Department of Law, petition 2020-12-06-03 to consider the adoption of a compiled and revised Livonia Vision 1, Vision 21 zoning ordinance and Livonia Vision 21 zoning map with respect to this item be considered for a second read and roll, roll call vote in accordance with the provisions of the city charter.
Madam President.
Vice President Jolly.
I will offer a second reading on this matter.
It's already been a long week. Councilmember Jolly has offered a second reading and approval, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to ask if we have a discussion. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've had several calls and a couple emails. I don't know if any of you have also had these. There's some strong rumors going around that we're building all kinds of apartments on the corner of Five and Farmington, or Farmington and Five. And I don't know how these rumors getting started. And some of them will be subsidized by the federal government. And then I, I don't know where they're starting. But I, I just wanted to voice it when we're on cable tonight for the record that nothing is included in this. And if six of you want to correct me if I'm wrong, please do. Because I just want the word to go out, nothing like that has been proposed in this proposal that I know of. It does change some zoning kinds of things, but we don't have anything written in stone. So.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to get rid of that real quick.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Yeah.
And if I could just say.
Please.
And this is what happens. Not you, and we appreciate you bringing this to our attention, when people choose to get their information from social media and Facebook and not to read ordinances or call their elected representatives to ask what is in a zoning ordinance or attend meetings.
Right. Thank you.
Madam President?
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you. Just to kind of touch base, obviously, there is a lot of rumors that go around. This, the Vision 21, this is the step to really clean up our current zoning and I think get rid of some of the districts that are old and outdated. This really clears the way for Livonia to redevelop a lot of these vacant areas. I would stress that a lot of these things are still going to have to come before council. But from the residential districts to creating different zoning areas, this is a pretty good plan and I commend staff for all the time that they spend on it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience like to comment on this? All right. If not, Clerk, would you please take, would the clerk please take the vote, the roll call vote on this? Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye. And the, the zoning ordinance change is, update is approved and the ordinance will become effective upon publication in the newspaper. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Number 11 is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Nick Cornell, General Manager Supernatural Spirits and Brewing LLC to host the Wildwood Sour Fest event on Saturday, August 28th, this Saturday, from 3:00 to 10:00 PM with live music and DJs on property located at 36685 Plymouth Road.
Madam Chair, offer and approving.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Donavick?
Madam President.
Vice President Barr?
I think it's behooves us just to mention this since we had an issue about noise ordinances earlier tonight or about noise waivers. This, this too, I believe, is an event that we've had something similar at this location in the past without any issues. And this is also in an area that is separated enough from residential areas that I think there's, there's low, low probability of this being an issue from a noise standpoint at all. And again, we have previous experience, I believe, with this owner without an issue. So, thanks, Vice President.
So council, there's no decibel level that you want me to put in the resolution?
Madam Chair, it is Brandon's birthday that night, so I'm not sure.
Well, perhaps he's going to host a party there and invite all of us. We'll wait for the invites. Councilmember Toy?
Toy?
Oh, I thought it was.
Oh, my God.
White. Madam Chair, since this first event is coming up pretty quickly on August 28th, I would ask that the mayor's, mayor's office consider a no veto letter on this one. Thank you. Once we vote. All right. Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President.
Got it right.
Just, you know, I know the petitioners here. If any of you have not been to Supernatural Brewing, it is one awesome establishment. You guys do great things. The brunch is back, I see. Giving you some, some kudos and a plug there. But looking forward to it. Honestly, you know, it is my birthday that day, so I might swing by. And we'll keep those decibels lower to whatever. But no, if you haven't checked out Supernatural, please make sure to be a good patron. You guys are off of Plymouth Road, just, I believe, west of Newburgh, east of Newburgh. So.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Donavick?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I just wanted to plug you guys as well. Over the years, if you're familiar with the area, there's been a lot of restaurants that have come in through there and have failed. And I bet that Supernatural's probably lasted the longest as of recent. You guys do a great job. I've been there multiple times to eat and great food, great drinks. So I'm looking forward to stopping by and celebrating Councilman McCullough's 21st birthday.
Thank you. It's gonna be a good night.
Congratulations on what you guys are doing. I know you have another agenda item, number 12. So I'm not going to give you props more on number 12. I'll just give you props now. So, great job.
All right. Anyone else? All right.
Does the petitioner want to say anything?
I just went to the audience. If you'd like to say anything, you don't have to, Mr. Cornell. I assume you're Mr. Cornell, right? Yes, we've met you before. Thank you for being here tonight. Then we can go ahead, Madam Clerk, and please take the vote on item number 11, which is the motion to request the, to waive the city's noise ordinance. Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye. And the motion carries. And so we have waived the noise ordinance for your, for your Saturday, August 28th event. And Councilwoman White had made proactively a request for a non-veto letter from the mayor's office. Item number 12 is also a request to waive the city's noise ordinance, also from Nick Cornell, General Manager Supernatural Spirits and Brewing LLC, to host the October Fest event on Saturday, September 25th, 2021, from 3:00 to 10:00 PM with live music and DJs on property located at 36685 Plymouth Road. Excuse me.
Madam President.
At Councilmember Jolly.
I will offer an approving resolution on this matter.
I'll support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam President. Seeing as this is one of our local Livonia breweries here, it might be interesting if you could make a special recipe of beer that could be indicative of the flair of the council meetings here. Like if you could make like a Consent Agenda Ale or something like that. I, I think you'd have a lot of buyers up here who just wish everything would go to the Consent Agenda and they would toast to that. So.
That's a bad joke.
Good luck. Thank you for being here.
Madam Chair?
As long as it's not called The Grid, please.
That'll be a room, special room.
All right. Any other discussion?
President, will council have approval over those drinks?
No comment. All right. If there's nothing else, and I apologize, I did not yawn because I was bored. I'm having allergy and eye issues tonight and that made me yawn. So I'm not bored. I'm not exhausted. I just, so my apologies. All right. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the waiving the noise ordinance on September 25th for Oktoberfest? Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye. And the noise waiver is granted and congratulations. And we'll look forward to those events. Item number 13 is a request to approve an hourly rate increase. This comes to us from the Department of Civil Service for the classification of substitute library and council.
Madam Chair, I'll offer approving.
Support. Councilmember Jolly?
I will defer to my colleague.
Councilmember Toy, is that a support?
Yeah, together.
All right. Council, does anyone have any questions for the petitioners before we? Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. As we had in the study meeting, I think that this increase is par with the, the current market out there. I think it's been low for many, two years and I support this increase. And hopefully the staff that are there will be, if this does pass, will be excited and grateful for the increase and also for the retention and hiring going forward.
Councilmember Jolly?
I'm also in support of this. I think it's important to pay people what their skill and education levels require and are worth. You know, I, I think some of our discussion beforehand indicated that this would in some ways be a raise for the current people who are working there, who have worked at the lower rate. To me, their dedication to their craft and their willingness to serve in a professional capacity should not be indicative of them deserving less. So it's with that, I'll be supporting this happily. And it's just, it's always a good opportunity to thank the professionals at the library. A few years ago, I had an opportunity to write a letter of support for a grant that the library was requesting. And people think of the library, generally speaking, as a depot of books and just a point of checkout and all that kind of stuff. The, the programs and the things that our Livonia libraries are doing are amazingly innovative. And the people leading this by and large are librarians. We get a lot of national attention occasionally in Livonia. But I think probably in the last six years that I've been here, the biggest point of national attention we got is I think on the Tonight Show, one of our library videos, Stephen Colbert.
No, James Corden.
One of, one of the late night TV shows featured our library's spoof video that they made.
Featured Tony LaPorte.
Jumped off City Hall.
Right. And I mean, I mean, these things don't happen without creativity and a lot of work and a lot of effort from the library and our Livonia TV staff as well. So I mean, and I've said this before, the library does a lot. They deserve a lot. And we really need to address at some point the status of the facility over there. And you know, as times change here, how we fund the library and how we improve the conditions and the available resources there. So anyways, step in the right direction. Happy to support it.
Anyone else? Vice President Barr?
So I'd concur with most of what Councilman Jolly just said. Certainly concur with everything he said about the value of the library, the innovation of the library. I finally remember that video and saw a whole different side of Tony LaPorte than I've seen before. But, and I also, and I'm going off the cuff here, so forgive me if I'm wrong. But I think shortly after, sometime back in 2016, if I recall correctly, I think Jim even put into committee the subject of some strategic plan for the library or whatever. And I'm not sure we've ever actually done anything with that. I'll have to go back and look. But you can comment if you want, Jim, when I'm done here on that. I may be wrong. I seem to recall that. But listen, I, I have a lot of respect for everything that goes on in the library and the people over there. What we're talking about here is, is not all the library employees. We're talking about a specific job classification. And I'm not going to belabor the point here because I, look, it's, it's easy. It's frankly, it's, it's more enjoyable and it's more fun as council members to sit up here and smile and nod and say, yes, we agree. We all want to get along, right? But, but I mean, there's, our, our job as a council is to look at what the financial situation of the city is and to, and to make sure we're doing things that make sense. And just to be perfectly candid, you know, anybody that watched the study meeting before, I, I asked pretty extensive questions to try to understand the market need for this. And quite frankly, I don't see evidence for the market need of this. And I've done additional research in the two weeks since. I, I mentioned last time, I, I think there's an analogy to be drawn here with this position and like a substitute teacher within, within the schools. Another situation where we generally like to see master's degrees. I don't know that they're required, but I know our teachers are encouraged to get those. But when it comes to the rate that our substitute teacher are paying, because in one sense, they're doing the same job, but in another sense, they're very much not doing the same job. They're there for a few hours at a time. They're, they're not doing the long-term aspects of the job. And, and it was interesting today, there's not a state in the country that has a substitute teacher rate that even comes from a percentage basis even close to what our current substitute librarians are making. And so just looking at those comparables and then, and then even within the city of Livonia, that's the case. We're, we're talking about a proposed 25% wage increase here for something that, in spite of all my questions, I haven't heard the evidence that we have a market need for it. And so nothing but respect for what's going on at the library, but you know, we're talking dollars and cents here and, and what, what is appropriate for that position. I think for that position, I think what we're doing currently makes sense. So I, I do not support this. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Anyone else? All right. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on item 13? Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
No.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre? No. And the vote passes five to two. Or the motion carries five to two. And so the hourly rate increase is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 14 is a request to approve amendment and contract to authorize additional expenditure. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works to include an additional segment of water main replacement on Seven Mile between Meadowridge Drive and Inkster Road under Dwarf, the Drinking Water Ref, Drinking Water Revolving Fund Project 745301, and provide payment to Bridget, to Bridget Air, I'm probably not saying that correctly, Bridget Air Contractors Incorporated, OHM Advisors in amount not to exceed $586,050 for these services from budgeted funds, Council Resolution 180-21.
I was so moved at Madam Chair.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Donavick. Mr. Rushlow?
Good evening.
Could you please give me your corrected title?
Certainly. Happy to do so. Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works.
Assistant Director. Thank you. I was close.
Very welcome.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Rushlow?
Yes. So this request is to include an additional segment of water main replacement on Seven Mile Road. This is between Meadowridge Drive and Inkster Road. It'll be, the, the addition would be through the, an existing contract that you have with a contractor as well as our engineers working under the Drinking Water Revolving Fund project in that area. Drinking Water Revolving Fund Project is known as Areas Four through Six from our Capital Improvement Plan that was awarded to Bidigiri Contractors.
Bidigiri, thank you. I knew I wasn't.
Correct. Yes. And OHM Advisors as the engineer per Council Resolution 180-21. The DBW requests to include this additional water main segment for the replacement on Seven Mile Road. Seven Mile Road based on a few factors. One, it has experienced five water main breaks since 2013 prior to this work adjacent starting, and just recently, even after, in the last month, when the, the product, the water main project did start, there was a water main break on that line as well. And the thing that's really concerning us is that with the water main project, there are five connections that are required to be made to this main on Seven Mile Road. So our main concern is, excuse me, due to that break history and, and the recent break and the number of connections that are required, that we're at risk to experience additional failures and breaks while trying to make those connections. So we did get proposals from OHM to provide the design that would be needed to replace this main, as well as to perform construction engineering, as well as a quote from our contractor Bidigere to construct that water main under the existing terms in their contract. So with that, it's our recommendation of the department that council take the following actions to proceed with this necessary water main replacement work. Authorizing a contract amendment with Bidigere Contractors to include this work in an amount of $502,650 and authorize a contract amendment with OHM Advisors to include design and construction engineering related to the Seven Mile Road water main work in an amount of $65,400. That being combined, authorizing an additional expenditure from budgeted funds of the Water and Sewer Fund not to exceed $568,050.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly, then Donavick?
Thank you, Madam President. So, this is, although complicated and very wordy, probably one of the most important things that we do as a city, right? And I appreciate that, and I think I have some kind of, enough of an understanding of all the information that you provided to understand what this is. So my question's a little bit of a side shot here. When we're replacing a water main to this extent, we're familiar with, probably us on, up here on the council and who are dealing with this on a daily basis like yourself have more of an understanding of this, but residents as well see water mains that are broken throughout the city at different points of the year. When we're replacing a water main to this extent with, with what I suspect is better technology than that which existed 50 years ago when these pipes were originally laid, are they any less prone to breaking, or is there a certain time span in which they are less worrisome for breaking or no? I guess that's just a, that's probably a lot of, a loaded question there, but off the hip, are you able to provide any kind of answer to that?
Yeah, and I make sure I want to understand your question right. You're asking when we're, when we're doing a water main replacement, is there a tendency for that main to break before we fix it or using the method that we're replacing it?
Once we've replaced it, i, is it, do we have some sense that it will last a particular period of time without breaking such as those older pipes are currently breaking throughout the city?
Yeah, okay, certainly. So, absolutely, and you mentioned the technology piece. I mean, the, the engineering design and material improvements that have been done over the years. I mean, the water mains that were put in historically throughout the city in the 50s and 60s when a lot of the buildout occurred, many of those were cast iron, which is a very brittle pipe. Shortly thereafter, in the 70s and 80s, they started producing a ductile iron pipe, which in that process of forging iron creates more flexibility in the pipe, so it doesn't have as many brittle failures. Now, and going a few years in the future, we're using more plastic materials for pipe. So in this case, like this project is a high-density polyethylene plastic pipe that will be put in place and in service, actually in line with where the existing pipe is. Because it's an old brittle cast iron pipe, it's very easy to replace with a method called pipe bursting, where you're actually breaking and shattering that old cast iron pipe and pulling that new high-density polyethylene pipe right in the same track in the same place. Those, those plastic pipes haven't been in the ground as long yet as these ductile iron pipes and cast iron pipes. So what we're hearing industry-wide is minimum of 50-year design life, is what they're kind of saying is the standard. We're expecting those to last much, much longer than that. So that's kind of a comparison.
So we're making some good progress in terms of addressing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Problems for the long run anyways, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Council, no, I'm sorry, Donavick, then Toy?
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Mr. Rushlow, for being here tonight. Little side note, but it's, and it's connected to this, when we talk about water main breaks and, and the progress in construction, you're familiar, I know it's a Wayne County project, but the water main project on Schoolcraft Road in the, in the area of Middlebelt and Inkster and whatnot, and it's been going on for months. And I talked to a lot of businesses, a lot of residents in the area, and it's, it's a pretty large impact in the day-to-day life of a resident going to and from work or wherever they're traveling, and then especially businesses, traffic going in and out. I mean, for instance, at the Middlebelt Road, excuse me, Middlebelt and Schoolcraft Road, if you just sit there for five minutes, it's, it's crazy. But to Mr. Councilman Jolly's point, I mean, we have to get these sorts of things done, they're really important. So what kind of precautions do we take as a city to kind of lessen the impact on residents and, and businesses when we're doing these extensive water main projects that block off roadways and?
Yeah, sure. So, thanks for the question. And with a project like this, and I kind of mentioned that new method of pipe installation, right, so that trenchless technology of using a pipe burst method, for instance, what we're using here has many fewer service disruptions. The pipe is pre-chlorinated and tested ahead of time, so when it's put into place, the services are tied back in that same day, so the amount of time the, the businesses or residents are out of water is very short and limited. The disruption areas are small because you're not digging a trench the entire length. You're only having to dig up at the locations where we're either putting in a valve or a hydrant or a new replacement of a service to a, to a home or a business. So there's those factors alone, and, and looking at the innovative technologies you try to use and implement throughout the city really help to limit those disruptions and downtime and, and even having a, you know, impacts to roadways or sidewalk or even your landscaped lawn areas are really minimized with these types of technologies in the project like this.
Thanks, Mr. Rushlow. I imagine you can't give us an update on that Schoolcraft property project because it's not your project, so.
It's not, but we are definitely involved in those discussions on a weekly basis, as well as our team at OHM that's assisting us on that with, with traffic control and the maintenance of traffic they're doing, as well as the pipe work, the road work. It's a big project, and I'd be lying if I didn't say they have had a lot of problems and challenges, so I'm definitely going to admit that that is something they're experiencing, and it's a bit headache for all of us, and we continue to stand top of it as much as possible.
Thanks, Mr. Rushlow.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Rushlow, I think this will help too. In other cases, when Detroit Water and Sewer would throw, or throw, put the water through quite, quite forcefully, the pressure burst pipes at, at many points as well that caused a lot of disruptions. So this will help perhaps alleviate that as well.
Yep.
Also, just on another note, if I may, the Seven Mile Newburgh problem with the water for the residents over there and the golf course and such, hopefully, I don't know if you guys are in on that, but those residents have been before council and need some help over there and understanding or whatever.
Certainly, yep, we definitely understand that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Rushlow, just a question. I think the scope's fine, OHM's involved, I think everything looks great. Just kind of getting my arms around the budgetary. The general ledger number that this showed was 592, 158, which is, what, construction in progress?
Correct.
Just get my arms around, obviously, this is an amendment, this is gaining on a project. Can you just explain how, you know, do we have a lot of reserves for the budget amount in this fund to cover these types of expenditures?
So I don't have the ledger in front of me to, to see how much money is available. I do know it is available for this project. We've had money budgeted for water main replacement projects that may come up that were unplanned. So there's some of that included in the budget on an annual basis. Usually it's around a million dollars as projects within that threshold. We also had a couple of projects, actually last year, that we had carried over with additional funds that made available for 2021 due to COVID and some of the restrictions we had in place. You might recall like our footing drain disconnection program, which was very invasive, going to people's houses and basements and doing all that type of work unrelated to water main, but just an example. We weren't able to do that last year, which was another, you know, million dollars that was carried forward and available for projects as they come up like this. So the, the fund does, does have money and it is budgeted.
No, and thank you for that. I mean, and for the people that are paying attention in the public out there that, you know, you guys are, obviously have a contingency for the unforeseen, and this is something, when we talk about budgeted funds, that's where it's coming from. And then just a side note, because I'm intrigued by the, the basically the boring break method. Do you guys, what do you do for this? Because I know, isn't it subgrade and soils a huge impact? I mean, do you worry, how does that work in terms of, of this process?
Yeah, so this one, the, the surrounding soils aren't, aren't a major concern with a pipe burst because it's really just shattering that old pipe and it pushes it out a little bit. You're pulling the new pipe in, which is a little bit thicker than the caster and the, the high-density polyethylene because it's a flexible plastic.
Almost like a compression fit.
The pipe wall is a lot thicker. So that does become a concern with something like a horizontal directional drill. Yeah, that's a little more concerned with soil. So a lot of times we'll have soil boring information, geotechnical analysis ahead of time to understand the conditions in situ before we put the pipe in the ground.
No, it's cool. It's very intriguing.
That's a whole, that's another long discussion that we don't want to bore everybody with tonight.
Well, thank you.
All right, anything else? Anyone from the audience wish to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the request to approve the amendment to the contract and authorize additional expenditure for this project? Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye, and the contract amendment and author, and additional expenditures authorized. Thank you, Mr. Rushlow.
Thank you.
Assistant, Assistant Director of Public Works. All right, and thank you to OHM too for being here tonight. All right, item number 15 is a request to forfeit landscaping entrance marker bond. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for Rosati Industrial Parks, Industrial Park Subdivision located on the west side of Stark Road between Schoolcraft Road and Plymouth Road in the south half of Section 28. Council?
Offer and approving, support.
Uh, Barr and Councilmember McCullough. Mr. Zalinsik?
Again, it's just a bit of a housekeeping issue. The developer came to us, asked for his bond back, realized it wasn't installed, said that has to be installed, so he agreed, confirmed that he wanted to have us forfeit the bond. I think he's going to have a new person take over the site, and that'll be addressed in a, obviously, development there. There's hardly been any development there, but new development's coming on board, so we're hoping to see that take, take fruition here. But again, this is just a housekeeping issue, looking to forfeit his bond and then obviously take the funds if necessary to help that landscaping entrance marker if necessary.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Zalinsik? All right, any comments from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call vote on the, this motion to allow the forfeiture of the landscaping entrance market, entrance marker bond? Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye, and the motion carries, and so the request for forfeiture of the landscaping entrance marker bond is approved. At this time, we go back to the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to comment on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. All right, and with that, with seeing no one, we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, support.
I think we can safely show seven on that. We are at 8:44. We are adjourned, and we will reconvene at 8:55 for the study meeting. Thank you.